Good evening, everyone. I've called to order the work session for Monday, March 4th. We're here this evening to talk about and learn about the oil and gas bill that's been[106.84][106.84]introduced at the state legislature. Are you not hearing us? Very good?
It's a little low.
A little low.
We'll check the...
Okay. We have a magic button in there that we push every time we need more volume.
Yeah.
Is that better? Good? Okay, good. All right, Matt, do you want to lead us off?
Thanks, Matt. So, tonight, we've got the work session to discuss Senate Bill, I think it's 19-181, which is an oil and gas reform bill that was introduced on Friday. And Matt Surra, who's our special counsel for the town with regard to these issues, is here tonight, as well as our newly hired lobbyist, Elliot. Nice to see you. So I thought maybe we start with Matt, providing an introduction, maybe introduce Elliot to the board, and then if Elliot has anything, opening words you'd like to say. And then we've got a couple 101 education on the bill, and then as well as testifying in front of the legislature, which will happen tomorrow. Matt?
Good to see you all again. Matt Surra, special counsel for Town of Superior. I just wanted to give you a quick overview of the bill. A lot of people, in fact, probably hundreds of people, spent the weekend, cold weekend, reading legislation, rather than outdoors, playing in the snow. Because it's a long bill, and not many people had an opportunity to look at it before Friday. This was one that was really kept close to the vest by the bill sponsors, and so we're all trying to play catch-up. Having said that, I think that this bill really does a lot, and would really move the ball forward for local governments such as the Town of Superior. So, again, the speaker, Casey Becker, is the sponsor in the House, and the Senate Majority Leader, Steve Fenberg, Senator Steve Fenberg, is going to be leading the effort tomorrow in the Senate. Senate hearing is before the Energy and Transportation Committee tomorrow. That hearing is going to be in the big room, Room 357 in the State Capitol. It is going to be a full house, so I suggest that folks show up for the 2 o'clock hearing at 1 o'clock, if they want to be able to get in the room. So what does the bill do? I like to think about this bill in breaking it into three parts. The first part is reforming the mission of the Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Commission to truly protect public health, safety, welfare, and the environment. Secondly, to give local governments such as yourselves an opportunity to meaningfully regulate this industry and protect your constituents' public health, safety, welfare, and the environment within your jurisdiction. And ultimately, put an end to state preemption. That is, the ability of the Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Commission to preempt you from being able to regulate meaningfully this industry. And then finally, reforming forced pooling laws. Now, in reforming the Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Commission's mission, we look to a decision that came from the Colorado Supreme Court just a few months ago, that is the Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Commission versus Martinez. And the state Supreme Court found that the mission of the Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Commission, our government agency that is regulating the oil and gas industry, and has got primary charge of regulating this industry, well, their mission is to foster the development of oil and gas resources, first and foremost. Secondly, they are to protect public health, safety, and welfare, but so only after taking into consideration cost-effectiveness and technical feasibility. So that's a mouthful there. That really kind of gives reasoning for some of the decisions that we've seen over the years, where, say, the Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Commission allowed for a siting of multi-well facility just outside of a school in Greeley. Or the decision of the Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Commission in rulemaking to have a 500-foot setback regardless of how large the facility is, from a home. Or apartment building, for that matter. So a lot of those decisions weren't based in health and safety, they weren't based in science, they were more of a weighing of what can we get away with in this, so the industry won't be feeling any financial harm. So, how does it change it? And this is a mess, but it changes the word "foster to regulate," which is critical. It also changes that they're going to regulate in a manner consistent with the protection, just comes down and says, you know what, you're going to regulate to protect public health, safety, welfare, including protection of the environment and wildlife resources. This in itself would be a meaningful bill, all by itself. It also takes on this issue of cost-effectiveness and technical feasibility, it just eliminates that language entirely from the legislation in two places. The bill also contemplates a number of rulemakings, but it's not very prescriptive in those rulemakings. It just sets out that there are some areas that we're expecting that there will be some rulemaking in order to protect public health, safety, welfare, and the environment. And I think that that's as it should be. The legislature does a lot very well, but getting into the weeds and being able to navigate every one of these really complex areas is not really the job of the legislature. That's the job of the Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Commission, frankly, but they need some guidance as to what they should be doing and what rulemaking that they should embark in. And so it sets out six areas. They want to, this is, the first one is for the Air Quality Control Commission, they want them to do some rulemaking to reduce emissions from oil and gas industry. Then they go to the Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Commission, asking for consideration of alternative locations, looking at cumulative effects for the first time, establishing fees to pay for monitoring enforcement. Believe it or not, there are no fees that are levied on the oil and gas industry, no permitting fees at all. Ensuring proper plugging and abandonment of wells, again, this is an area that has received a lot of press recently because there are what we call orphaned wells out there, where essentially, the operator goes bankrupt, or can't be found, and they just walk away from their responsibilities, leaving us, the taxpayers, to foot the bill for plugging and abandoning those sites. And finally, new rules for wellhead integrity and flow lines. So it also does a little bit around changing the makeup of the Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Commission, I believe, for the better, making it a more balanced commission. It requires commissioners with more environmental and public health experience, we're going to have one with environmental protection background, another member representing local government, a member with wildlife protection background, another member with soil conservation and reclamation, and then a member with a public health background. There's nine members on the commission, the other member is going to be, of course, somebody with oil and gas industry background, someone with agricultural background, and then the heads of both the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment and the Department of Natural Resources, rounding it out to nine, all appointed by the governor. So I can stall...
Just to clarify on that last one, is it a minimum of two of the nine have to be from the western slope? And it's not necessarily, I mean, it can be inclusive of these same people?
Exactly right.
Okay.
Exactly right. And feel free to stop me at any time. And now I'm going to shift over to talking about local governments and giving them clear regulatory authority over this industry. State Supreme Court, a decision in 2016, actually, two decisions, City of Longmont versus Colorado Oil and Gas Association, and City of Fort Collins against Colorado Oil and Gas Association. The state Supreme Court found that a local oil and gas ordinance that authorizes what the state law forbids, or that forbids what the state law authorizes, is in operational conflict, therefore is preempted by the Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Commission. Operational conflict test was crystallized by this decision, and it really, in many cases, shut down the ability of local governments to meaningfully regulate this industry, based on the fact that there's this standard now that is clarified, and frankly makes it very, the area that local governments can regulate really minimizes that, to areas that aren't regulated by the Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Commission, those being emergency response, transportation, maybe some landscaping, and not much else. So how does it change it? Well, in Section 4 of the bill, it grants very clearly in local government land use authority statutes, all local governments, clear and broad land use authority over oil and gas development, and it also allows, specifically and clearly allows, for local governments to charge the industry for the cost of monitoring and enforcement, and the imposition of fees for violations of local land use regulations. Most important part of the bill is in Section 15. Again, this is what I think local governments fought should be the law all along, is that we do need a Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Commission. Clearly, Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Commission has more than 100 staff, many people who are doing an excellent job, engineers, staff that are really, really excellent in their field. And they're regulating the oil and gas industry, and they understand that oil and gas industry better than most local governments could. However, their ability to regulate doesn't go down to, I think, the area that your constituents are most concerned about, which is the location of these facilities. That is something that local governments do far, far better than they do, because you have the capacity to hold hearings, to allow impacted stakeholders or people that have adjacent land uses to come speak to you and talk to you about their concerns, because you know what you want your community to look like, because you've done planning. That's not something that the Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Commission does at all. They have a very narrow focus, they only look at oil and gas. So it's important to have a floor set by the Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Commission, but allow local governments to go beyond that floor, that regulatory floor. And that's exactly what this language does. If there's a conflict between the regulations or standards of a local government and a state agency, including the Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Commission, or between state agencies regarding exercise of authority, the regulation or standard that is rationally designed to be more protective of public health, safety, and welfare, the environment or wildlife resources controls. Meaning that the higher standard is always going to be the one that is imposed on the oil and gas industry. Probably the most important part of the bill, as far as I'm concerned.
So Matt, I have some questions about that, I don't know if you want to keep going and then I can ask?
Be fine to take questions now.
So, I spent some time reading this bill over the weekend, and so there's five different statutory sections within the Colorado revised statutes that this bill is proposing to amend, and, you know, there's interplay between the various provisions, right? So there's the section that deals with the Oil and Gas Conservation Act, which expressly deals with the preemption issue, that says that the most restrictive, most protective section is going to apply. On the section that deals with local government authority, so that's the Local Government Land Use Control Enabling Act.
Right.
And I don't know if you're going to deal with that separately here, but there's a section that talks about that local governments have the authority to regulate, to plan for and regulate the use of land, and then also, the bill expressly gives local governments the ability to regulate oil and gas operations, right? So there's the actual land use power that is given to local governments, and then there's regulating actual operations, assuming that they're approved and allowed to go forward. And then, within that context, there's protections for, you know, nuisance type, so oil, the odors and the noise and things like that.
Correct.
And then also, the local governments are allowed to regulate the siting, so the locational decision as to where the wellheads are going to actually go. With respect to actually, you know, planning for and regulating the use of land, how broad is the power of the town? I mean, could the town regulate and decide that oil and gas is not consistent with the town's zoning ordinances and just not permit it at all? Do we need to have some sort of threshold determination as to compatibility with surrounding areas, as to, you know, maybe we want to have a 1,500-foot setback from residential and 2,500-foot setback from schools? I didn't see anything like that in the proposed bill, so I'm just curious as to, like, you know, what are our powers, assuming?
What are the sidebars? I mean, I think it's a fair question, and every local government is going to be wrestling with that. I could make an argument that right now you have the ability to zone oil and gas and to require it to be located in, you know, a zone that's industrial, or heavy industrial. That question has never been taken up by any court, and it hasn't certainly been decided by the Colorado Supreme Court. This language, I believe, would give you the power to do that, to say that it's in industrial use and therefore it belongs in an industrial area. You're going to have to weigh that with, are you precluding any oil and gas development or the exercise of their mineral right, their being able to access those minerals at all? If the only place they could possibly locate is in the Town of Superior, and the only place that they could locate is going to be within 1,000 feet of a home, and you want it to be a 1,500-foot setback, that's something that you're going to have to consider as to whether or not the protection of public health, safety, and welfare is that much more dramatic with 1,000-foot setback as opposed to 1,500-foot setback, and preclude them from accessing those resources. You know, you're potentially faced with a takings lawsuit. I think that those are your sideboards, is a takings claim. Having said that, I think that a takings claim is a really hard thing for the oil and gas industry to prove. So they'd have to show that they've got a diminution of value almost entirely, and that public health, safety, and welfare is not, that preclusion from them exercising their mineral rights isn't necessary to protect public health, safety, and welfare.
So I get that, and I appreciate that answer.
Wasn't what you were looking for, I'm sorry.
No, no, I mean, I understand that it's really a nuanced answer, and it depends on the town that is enacting ordinances on its books to appropriately pertain to that particular town, right? We're only four square miles, we're mostly developed.
Right.
All the residential development that is already coming here has largely been approved, so there's, you know, little just area in terms of, you know, where potential oil and gas development could, I think, be located. Whereas if we're looking at, you know, Weld County, really, areas that are more rural, where there's a lot more open space, undeveloped areas, you know, I think there, you know, they're going to have to, you know, wrestle with a different calculus. But one question that I had with respect to, you know, the Highlands application that we saw in November, so, one of the things, and maybe you'll get into this again when we talk about the forced pooling aspects of the statute, but I noticed that in the proposed legislation, there is language that says, you know, after you get the 50% threshold for forced pooling, you still cannot require the surface owner, who is a non-consenting owner, to locate well operations on their land without their permission. When Highlands brought their application to the town, well, actually, when they brought it to COGCC in October, November, and we reached out to CenturyLink, the response that we got from CenturyLink, who's the owner of the property that they're intending to locate their wells, was they had no idea that this thing was coming, right? And I don't see that, you know, that wasn't necessarily a forced pooling issue, that was just locating a well site on land that wasn't owned by the operator and wasn't secured by a lease. So are there any additional protections in this proposed bill that could kind of insulate us from that sort of situation where somebody's trying to actually locate operations, independent of whether or not they're forced pooling or not, without the surface owner's consent?
No. And I'm sorry, that didn't show up in this bill. There's a lot of good in this bill, there's still a lot that is left undone, and that is a perfect example. Right now, in the state of Colorado, if I owned mineral rights underneath your property, and you had enough property to be able to develop for oil and gas, I could force my way on you by posting a $3,000 bond with the state of Colorado and just walk onto your land and start drilling, with notice, of course. And you have, you know, some recourse, and you could request a hearing before the Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Commission, but at the end of the day, my rights are going to trump yours.
But that assumes that you got mineral rights underneath the property, and with respect to the CenturyLink property, you know, the minerals weren't under CenturyLink, they were under Rocky Flats, and so they were planning on going in, just accessing the surface?
They never had a right to do that.
But they were going to do it anyway, or?
No, they would have been shut down. That was an ill-conceived proposal from the very beginning, for that reason and others.
Okay. So one of the things in this proposed bill, it also says, and I'm sorry to...
No, it's fine.
Monopolize the conversation here. It allows, well, it requires, before the applicant goes to COGCC, to first get the approval of the local government. So in connection with obtaining the approval, could that be one of the requirements that we insist on, that you have the surface owner's approval before any well site is approved?
Absolutely, you could. That could be a requirement. Again, I would be hard pressed to find a worse location than what they had proposed in the Town of Superior, particularly when there is open county space, open land that is in the jurisdiction of Jefferson County. They didn't have any reason to locate in the Town of Superior. It just seemed convenient, and it was a point on the map that they decided to rush an application before 112. That was the sole reason for that application in the first instance. What I'm hoping is that there is going to have to be some reasonable basis for any oil and gas location, particularly one that is going to be located anywhere within a municipality or anywhere near a home. As two examples, I would also put, you know, located within a flood plain, you know, a number of other, you know, issues that you could put in that to the list, that they're going to have to show some sort of reasonable basis by doing an alternative location analysis, and saying, we looked at all these other locations, and they're inaccessible or unavailable for these following reasons, and this is really the only place that we can go. And if they were to do that, I mean, the industry has tremendous technology to be able to do directional drilling all the way for about 3/4 of a mile before getting to their target formation, the Niobrara, the Codell, and then doing their horizontal lateral. So they have a tremendous amount of flexibility to be able to get those minerals. They can go from north, from south, from east, from west, you know, and do any sort of configuration of these drilling and spacing units to access those minerals. And therefore, they've got a lot of ability to be a little bit more creative than they have been, and just kind of choosing a location and then kind of forcing that on the local jurisdiction and through the Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Commission. I'm hopeful that if this were to pass, those days are over. So to just finish up, and I've got about two more slides, or one more slide, it does reform forced pooling laws. There was just a bill that was passed last year, and it was followed up with rulemaking. This just hits another couple issues that weren't touched on that bill, the first being that the operator must have secured consent from at least a majority of mineral owners before they can force pool the others. Right now, as you know, all you have to be is an owner within a drilling and spacing unit, meaning that you have to have one lease, or one acre, or a quarter of an acre, within an entire drilling and spacing unit that could be two to three square miles in size. And you can force pool them all with just one property. So that will change that issue. Current law also requires that forced pooled mineral owners receive a minimum of 1/8 or 12 1/2% royalty until the well pays for itself twice, and then they get 100%. This bill raises that to 15%, and it also requires that before they can force pool, they have to demonstrate and make a showing that they have negotiated a lease, or attempted to negotiate a lease in good faith. It's not, hopefully, if that were to pass, it's no longer okay for you to just send a check to mineral owners, and if they sign the back of the check, they're automatically leased. That's one of the tactics that they use in Weld County often, and that's not, shouldn't be considered a lease, and certainly not negotiated in good faith. So that is, I believe, the end of my presentation.
Matt, I've got another question.
Sure.
And I want to, I should have said this earlier, but I want to thank you for coming in and giving us this deep dive on this, and, you know, language is what it is, but it looks like there's a lot of good, strong language for local municipalities with respect to the siting of the facility, but I'm curious about, on the other side of CGOCC's ability to push back on fracking under Rocky Flats, for example. I don't see anything that gives them the stronger teeth to kind of push back on the oil and gas industry for what may not make sense, given the logistics, or like you said back in November, given the distance of what Highlands was trying to do, overcoming massive technical hurdles to do that and the risk associated with that. I don't really see anything here that gives COGCC the ability to challenge the assumptions there, because if I remember correctly, Highlands was going to get the green light from COGCC. There really wasn't anything that allowed COGCC to push back on the application.
I think that changing the mission gets us part of the way.
Okay.
Certainly, if the Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Commission has to put public health, safety, and welfare first, before the needs of the industry, or trying to foster or promote the oil and gas industry, those days are over if this bill were to pass, and I think that they would have to weigh that very carefully, and say if there's any concerns for public health, safety, and welfare, that we have to say no to that proposal. The other thing that I think might be interesting is that this clause here that allows for any state agency that has authority to be able to potentially preempt the Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Commission, or have their requirements that are going to supersede those of the Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Commission, and there are public health and safety concerns there, and CDPHE is involved in Rocky Flats to some extent. If CDPHE were to weigh in and say that that's not appropriate, I think that there's a possibility that in this instance, they would have to be heard.
That's fair. I guess there's the four or five entities that have to weigh in now, so...
That's right.
That is a big step.
Yeah.
Okay.
The other thing about Rocky Flats to remember is that, I forget how many specific mineral owners there are, there's at least 20, under Rocky Flats, the federal government being one of them. Changing the law on forced pooling, you know, in the, that they were planning on forced pooling under Rocky Flats, will be considerably more difficult if they need to get 50% of the mineral owners, and the federal government being one of them. You know, separate and apart from all of that, you know, we are bringing to the Rocky Flats Stewardship Council our motion on April 1st, to get the Stewardship Council to take a position on a resolution opposing any and all oil and gas development and fracking under Rocky Flats, so hopefully the council will be amenable to that motion.
Sounds great. All right, so I think that I'll, at this point, we'll turn it over to Elliot Williams, and I'll let you introduce yourself.
Yeah. Thanks, everybody. Great to be here with you. So just as a point of clarification, it's myself and then Emma. So just as a point of clarification, it's myself, and then Emma here is also part of our firm, and she'll be presenting kind of the second piece of this. But we came to kind of walk through a little bit more about the bill process itself, just so everybody can have a better understanding of what the process of the bill moving forward will be. I think as I give these kind of presentations, to me, it strikes me, the most important thing to really affect change at the legislature is to know what that process is, and so I think it's really important. I'm sure for some folks, this won't be the first time you've heard all of this, but hopefully we can give you a better sense of how we can get you all as the trustees engaged, but also folks in the community as well. Before we jump in, and I'll say that in addition to the how the bill becomes a law, we'll have Emma cover the kind of tips on testimonies, so that'll be the second piece of what we'll be talking about. But did just want to thank you all for this opportunity to represent you all down at the Capitol. We're really excited. It's, you know, only been all of about two days since we've been on the job, but really excited and engaging and figuring out the best way to bring your voice to the Capitol. Certainly, there are going to be a lot of voices down at the Capitol. There already have been. There will continue to be a lot of voices on this issue. We'll see a lot of testimony tomorrow on both sides of the issue, and so look forward to kind of pinpointing what specific pieces you all can bring to that discussion as local government and as affected community members. And so, you know, this is obviously just the first time we're meeting and having that conversation, but want to make sure that you all know that we are here to engage with you all and figure out the best way for you to be effective down at the Capitol. So look forward to having further conversations once we get through tonight and tomorrow about kind of next steps in that engagement. And hopefully, as we're walking through the bill process, you all can be thinking about ways that you may fit into that process, and obviously, that's what we're here to do as well, is kind of identify the best ways to engage in the process. So I think Emma has some handouts. One of them is a graphic representation of the bill process, and the other one is a little bit more detail on testifying. And so again, we'll just start with the graphic representation, looks like this. It says, "How a Bill Becomes a Law in Colorado," and then Emma will go through the testimony piece. Please stop me if you have any questions. And again, I'm sure some of this is review for folks, so I'll try and move relatively quickly through this, but if there are any questions, feel free to flag me down as I'm moving through, and I'll just wait one second for that handout to make its way through. So as folks know, as we've already talked about, we have a bill. It's been introduced. You know, just to back up even prior to that, there's been obviously months and years of work done in this space, and, you know, certainly some folks in this room, I'm sure, have engaged in that work. The bill didn't just come out of nowhere, and so, you know, one thing that I like to emphasize is a lot, you know, perhaps the most important thing about a bill's process and prospects are what kind of work has been done prior to that introduction. And obviously, there's a lot of work that's been done by folks all across the state on this issue, and from my understanding, there have been a lot of conversations with stakeholders, everyone from folks who are going to be there in opposition tomorrow in the industry to supporters and everybody in between. And so I think that as of now, the bill is in a place where a lot of those conversations have already happened, but certainly, there's plenty more to be happening, starting again tomorrow. So the bill is introduced. We have bill sponsors. As folks know, the Speaker of the House in the House and Senate Majority Leader, again, the work that's done beforehand is really critical as it relates to who those bill sponsors are. So we have two of the highest ranking folks in the Capitol as bill sponsors, you know, certainly bodes well for the prospects of the bill and also speaks to the importance that the caucuses in both chambers hold this. And so, again, we have the support of leadership in both chambers, as well as the governor's office has certainly been engaging in this bill, to my understanding. And again, that's really critical to have buy-in from both chambers, as well as the first floor, and especially in a new administration, I think there's been a lot of feeling out as to where the governor is going to be engaging and how the governor is going to be engaging and prioritizing. He's clearly prioritizing this issue, and so I think that speaks to the importance as well as the fact that we're actually, we're going to be able to get something done. I think it remains to be seen if it's the entire package or not, but we can get to that as we're moving forward. So we have our sponsors. We have the bill. It's been introduced, and then, as folks know, tomorrow we'll be going to committee. So you can see on your chart, here, there's kind of the same process mirrored, both in the House and Senate, right? The bill actually has to go through both chambers, but the process is the same between the two chambers. Our bill will start in the Senate. Doesn't make a difference whether it starts in the Senate or House. In terms of process, it does still have to go through both chambers. So we'll start in the Senate with our first committee. Bills are assigned to a committee of reference, typically based on the issue area. As an example, this bill is going to the Energy Committee. From there, we then have another committee that will be, that we'll be going to as it relates to appropriations. So anytime there is any kind of state appropriations of funds, we need to go to the Appropriations Committee. So we'll start tomorrow on Transportation and Energy, and then, once we're through that committee, we'll be moving on to the next committee, which again, will be Appropriations. Just real basics on committee. In the Senate, not as much the House, but in the Senate, the committees are just a one-vote majority, so the Democrats have control over all the committees, but only by one vote. In the House, it's a little bit of a different situation because the majority is so large in the House, so there's some more votes. A lot of those committees are seven to four, eight to five committees, but in the Senate, it'll be, it'll be the one-vote majority in those committees. So real basics, just to get out of committee, we need a majority vote. So we'll need three votes as opposed, I think, actually, I don't know how big that committee is off the top of my head. Seven members, perhaps? Yeah. So it'll be a four-three vote needed to get through that committee. Testimony, and Emma will get into the details a little bit about this, but, you know, there's open public testimony in these committees, in the Committee of Reference in each chamber. In the Appropriations Committee, there isn't that public opportunity, so this is really the first and most direct way for folks to engage in the process, is through testimony tomorrow. Like I said, there's going to be a lot of testimony on both sides of the bill. I think there's going to be some effort to control the chaos tomorrow, and so we can talk about that. I know Mayor Folsom and Mayor Protam Lacy, you're both planning on heading down, so we can maybe touch base offline about kind of what that process looks like, but we do expect 100, 150, maybe more people there to testify, so we can talk about what the Senate's going to be working on to kind of make that a little bit more of a controlled situation there. So, you know, the plan is to get through committee tomorrow after all the testimony, and then be in the Appropriations Committee later on this week. Last I heard, that was a Thursday. It's committee Thursday or Friday, and then from there, bills move to the Committee of Hold. So this is where it actually goes to the floor, for all the members to have that opportunity to discuss. Again, there's no public testimony within that space, but it's an opportunity for all the legislators who have not yet discussed the bill to come down to the floor and really make their points before and against. I imagine we'll have quite a lengthy debate whenever that gets to the floor of the Senate. Again, it could be the end of this week, more likely sometime next week, that goes to the floor of the Senate. The Senate actually hears the bill twice on the floor. So the first time is called the second reading, the first reading being when the bill is actually introduced and sent into committee, the second reading being the really long, extensive drawn-out debate, at which point there'll be a voice vote to move it to a third reading. And then the third is the final reading in that chamber, and that's when we'll actually have a recorded vote. There's no recorded vote on second reading. With contentious issues, as this one certainly will be, there may be some opportunities where folks in the minority party will be calling for recorded votes on certain amendments. And we can kind of get into that granularity if folks want to, but just know that the main recorded vote happens on third vote, but there will be probably opportunities from, again, opposition to try and get some votes on particular amendments to the bill, both in committee tomorrow, but then also on the floor of the Senate.
So I just want to make sure I understood. First off, thank you for coming here-
Yeah.
...and representing the town. In terms of the Committees of Reference for the Senate, so it's referred to Transportation and Energy, and they're holding a committee hearing tomorrow.
Yeah.
And so that's open to the public, and the public has the opportunity to testify. You said with appropriations, that'll be the second committee that goes through. There's no opportunity for public comment, public testimony at the Appropriations-
Right. Appropriations Committee is typically meets early in the morning. Each bill that they bring up is really just a minute or two that they're considering. It's really just looking at the dollars and cents. And Matt may have this information better than I do, but my understanding is most, if not all, of the appropriations is from a cash fund for this legislation. So it's not, you know, we're not actually diverting funds within the state's general fund. It's actually coming from an existing fund paid, I assume, by fees.
So as it concerns the Senate bill-
Mm-hmm.
...the only opportunity for public testimony is tomorrow?
Tomorrow. There's certainly, and I think we'll talk after this, about ways for, to get, you know, you all and members of the town in front of legislators, but that would be more of a, as a one-on-one conversation or, you know, a group of legislators meeting with constituents. You know, for example, Representative Gray, Senator Story have a town hall this upcoming weekend, I believe, so an opportunity would certainly be to get them in front of, to get folks in front of them at the town hall, as well as at the Capitol, setting up actual meetings to sit down with any legislator at the Capitol. But in terms of public, open testimony in the Senate, tomorrow will be the day, but then it will repeat this entire process in the House.
So that was my next question. There will similarly be an assignment probably to the Energy and Environment Committee-
Yeah.
...in the House?
Right.
Opportunity for public testimony-
Yeah.
...and then probably a referral to the Appropriations Committee in the House as well.
Yeah.
And is that the same thing in the House, that there will not be an opportunity-
Yeah.
...for public testimony during the appropriations?
Yeah. Yeah, that is the gist of it.
And when do you expect the House bill to be introduced? Do they proceed in tandem? Do they wait for one chamber to get finished first, and then they move on to the next?
So they, it's actually just one bill that moves through the whole process. So unlike some other states, and I think in Washington, there's no, there aren't separate bills in each chamber, it's just one bill that moves through the process. So it'll move the entire Senate process and then be introduced into the House. So just kind of working through that timeline, we're talking about, again, tomorrow, and then appropriations later in the week. Senate floor, hopefully, we're done with that next week, and then it will get introduced into the House end of next week or the following week, and move pretty quickly through committee in that similar fashion, and floor in the House, and then be done, you know, in the next few weeks total time. In theory, certainly, things can change, but I think the idea with this legislation is to move it as quickly as possible.
Okay.
I had mentioned a little bit about amendments. I think, you know, as, I think we can expect, certainly, there will be some opposition amendments. I think as the process is moving forward, we, there may also be sponsor-driven amendments based on some of the, what they're hearing from stakeholders and opposition in particular. So we'll certainly work to keep you all appraised of that. I think, you know, certainly, the, when bills are introduced, you want that to be the perfect bill, but realistically, especially on a bill like this that is so large, there's probably going to be some work done as we're moving through the process. And so I would anticipate there'll be some amendments, if not in committee tomorrow, potentially on the floor of the Senate. And so at any point in the process, when there is a hearing, there is an opportunity to amend the bill. So that, again, it could be in committee tomorrow, it could be on the floor of the Senate in the second reading, it could be on the floor of the Senate in the third reading, although that's much less common. The idea, typically, any floor amendments are done in the second reading. And then it can also be amended in the second chamber, which is, in this case, is the House. Ideally, we take care of any amendments in the first chamber, because if we go to the second chamber and amendment, and do any amendments, it has to go back to the first chamber for them to agree on that. You know, certainly, there will be an effort with leadership in both chambers and sponsors in both chambers to get everything done in terms of any amendments in the Senate. It's not to say something couldn't change between now and then, but I think that is certainly the strategy. Again, I don't know of any current amendments, but I think folks will anticipate that there may be some, as you can imagine, there'll be a plenty of pushback, and so whether or not there'll be an opportu, a reason to change the bill in any shape or form, we'll be finding out in the next couple of days.
And just to clarify, it will finish with committee tomorrow. There's no opportunity for the committee to hold it over to a second hearing?
There is always an opportunity for that. I don't think there, I think they hope to get it through it tomorrow. I think, you know, certainly, generally speaking, they'll leave open testimony until every single person has testified that wants to testify, so certainly, committee could go up till midnight, even past midnight, if the committee chooses to allow that. They could hold it over for additional testimony another day, but again, the goal is to get it done. I think the reason that there would be a reason to actually hold it over would be if there's some amendments that are proposed that folks need a chance to discuss, or there's some questions about whether or not the votes are there to move the bill forward, things like that, generally speaking, are why bills are held over from one committee hearing to the next, but I don't anticipate that tomorrow. I think getting through the testimony will really be the challenge, and again, that could take several hours to get through all the testimony.
Thank you.
Yeah.
One of the things that was reported in the news today was that the Republicans have been asking the Democrats to delay actual consideration of this before the committee.
Yeah.
Is that purely just a discretionary thing for the majority party, that they can set the scheduling however they see fit?
Yeah, so the majority in each chamber gets to set all the calendar and schedule as it relates to which committee the bills are assigned to, and as it relates to the timing of those committee hearings. My understanding is that some of the claims by the opposition have been a little bit overblown in terms of lack of notice for this type of a bill hearing, and I think my understanding is the sponsors have been having discussions with folks in that party, but regardless, it is completely up to the discretion of the Senate President, Senate Majority Leader, who happens to be the bill sponsor, and the committee chair. So just to wrap up the process, it moves through third reading, goes over to the House to go through that same process, Committee of Reference, Appropriations, floor work, second and third reading there. And then, assuming that there's no changes in the second chamber, then it goes to the governor's desk, and the governor has an opportunity to sign the bill or to just let it, let it go through without a signature, or of course, to veto the bill. So that's kind of the bottom line is, then what does, what's governor's action on this? Certainly, as I said, he's been engaged in discussions with the bill, so I don't anticipate any, any kind of veto threat. I think things that are moving forward will move forward with the governor, you know, in the room and as part of that discussion, so I don't anticipate any issues there. If there were to be some amendment concerns, or some amendments added into the House, like I said, they would, the bill would have to be sent back to the Senate for them to concur. In the off-chance that there's some disagreement between chambers, then there is what's called a conference committee, where a handful of legislators from each chamber come together to conference and agree on a new version. Again, because there's been so much coordination between leadership in both chambers, I don't see that playing out in this particular bill, but just as a point of order, that is something that can happen with other bills if there isn't agreement between chambers on amendments. Any questions on the process itself? I think, as I mentioned and we talked a little bit about, there's certainly opportunity to testify in those committees, but a lot of opportunity between now and the end of the process to also get in front of legislators, and so I think we'll be having discussions in the coming days and weeks to figure out how you all can engage as the bill's moving forward, whether it's through testimony, through letters, through emails, through actual meetings, town halls, et cetera, to make sure that the town of Superior's voice is being heard in this bill, so we can kind of continue that question of engagement as we move forward.
How likely do you think that, number one, this bill gets through both the Senate and House in this form and ends up on the governor's desk? You know, what are you hearing in terms of opposition from, you know, any senators? And this is probably a question for, the general question about lobbying. a question for, the general question about lobbying efforts and, and, you know, where to make the most impact. Um, and then secondarily, what, what's the likelihood that this bill gets carved up into something resembling something lesser than the whole that is being presented right now?
Yeah, I think, you know, as we talked about a little bit briefly, the senate, uh, majority is, is much smaller than the House majority. Senate majority right now is, uh, one, two votes Democrats. So it's a, uh, just a two-vote majority there in the senate and then in the House, I think it's fifteen, sixteen. It's, it's a large number in the House. So I think anything that happens will happen in the senate as it relates to any kind of scaling back or any kind of amendments. Um, I think there will be something, I'm confident to say there will be something done and I think it'll be significant this year. Whether it's exactly what we have presented or right here or not, I don't know. I, I think there, there's a good chance there will be some, um, tinkering. I, I don't know yet. I don't think anybody knows yet how significant things will be. And I think it will be helpful to have discussions with you all to figure out kind of where your lines are and where your priorities are within this legislation to make sure that we're representing that well. Um, cause certainly as Matt laid out, there's a, is a large bill, there's a lot of different parts to it. And so certainly we would like to accomplish everything, but knowing what, what is critical for you all, um, within the bill, uh, is going to be really important. So we can make sure to kind of convey that.
And this may be covered i- in the next section. Um, in looking at the makeup of the committee, uh, on the senate's, uh, Transportation and Energy Committee, is it valuable to try to direct specific types of comments towards specific members that may be on the fence one way or the other? I, I noticed there's, uh, potentially at least one person, uh, who, who could be on the edge there. Uh, can we talk a little bit to strategy, uh, in addressing our comments and questions to, mostly comments to the right people?
Yeah, and, and I can get into this a little bit as well, but certainly there's value in directing s- committee-specific issues, esp- you know, especially as it relates to, for example, their, a district that they represent. Um, I think, you know, we certainly, generally are going to want to be speaking broadly to the entire committee versus just one person, but I, but we can take, we can take some specific, um, thoughts. If you had anything in particular, I'd be happy to, we can certainly talk through, um, what that might look like and, and in what way, you know, specifically you had in mind. Um, just to get back to one question that you had in terms of lobbying, there, you know, there, there are going to be a handful of legislators in the senate that we're particularly going to be targeting and figuring out, um, again, how you all could engage with those handful of folks is going to be, you know, critical. Um, I think we feel pretty comfortable and confident with most of the senate, but there will be a few that we're going to be maybe pushing a little bit more than others. So, um, we can kind of revisit that.
Thank you.
Anything else? And if not, we can get into more specific kind of testimony-related issues.
Yeah, I think at the appropriate time, it is good for us to, or for you to let us know kind of who those key senators are, because we, we do have a good, strong base of people that can, uh, you know, that can engage on it. I think we're fortunate to have Matt Gray and Tammy Suri in our court. And, uh, so it really needs to be a, a message for those that are on the fence.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, whenever you all want to go through that. I don't know if it's at this meeting or at other meetings. I'm not quite sure what's your preferences in that space, but.
I think to the extent that you know it, uh, tonight would be appropriate because...
This is publicly broadcast, so.
Right, yeah. That's, uh, yeah, I mean, I, I think certainly we, um, have seen certain diff- different legislators, um, take attack of supporting more publicly the industry, um, both in the senate and the House. And so, um, keeping that in mind, I think there's, there's a handful of folks, I would say, more Denver-specific, rather Denver and surrounding areas-specific versus, um, you know, some of the outstate folks. But I think that, um, we can, we can probably target that a little bit better as we're going. I mean, I think certainly for your purposes, knowing not only the senators, that the senator that represents your district, but keeping in mind if there are senators in adjacent districts, that I think it's really helpful to bring the perspective of the town of Superior, which is maybe similar to a district that's maybe, that's adjacent one way or another, um, it will be important. And then I think, keeping in mind anybody else who's going to be on these committees, as, uh, was already brought up, um, knowing that there are some folks, um, that are going to be hearing the bill sooner than later. I think anytime that we can target folks that are going to be lis- hearing the bill tomorrow, for example, versus somebody that's not going to be hearing it for another week or two is, you know, just as a capacity and resources issue, I think is really important. Um, so I think we can kind of leave it at that for now, but there's, there's plenty of opportunity if you want to kind of go through the entire senate. And I can, I can give you a little bit more of a deeper dive on all those senators if that's helpful.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, good evening. Like Elliot said, my name is Emma Bleisner. I am on the team at Segal Public Affairs. Um, and we're going to be going over some of the nuts and bolts of actually testifying in front of a committee at the Colorado State Capitol. Um, but first, I'm just curious, how many people have maybe done it before? Anybody? One person? Okay, two people? Okay, so it won't be too much overview or review then. Um, so first I just want to go over the basics of kind of what it's like. There is a flow that happens. It's, it gets pretty repetitive, um, and it is pretty formal. So some of this is on your sheet. Um, when you arrive, uh, to committee, it'll be in a committee hearing room. Obviously ours tomorrow is going to attract a lot of people, so they'll move us into one of the bigger rooms instead of the normal, smaller rooms, probably about this size. Um, when you get there, if you are testifying, you will want to sign up. If you have a lobby team, they will most likely be signing you up or helping you with that process. It's generally in the back of the room. You just write your name. Um, if you want to include your address, something to identify you and who you're representing. So it can be a nonprofit organization. You could be, you know, representing yourself as trustees or as the town. Um, or if you're just representing yourself, they welcome that as well. And you mark on the sheet if you are in support or opposition to the bill. That's really important, um, because based off of the sponsors and the chairman's order, they'll be calling people either one support, one oppose. Sometimes they do a panel, um, where they bring up three people that can speak on the issue, so they can be asked questions together. Just all depends on the bill and the sponsors and how they're running it. Um, it is a pretty formal setting, so we do encourage individuals to, you know, be professional, use professional language, pretty basic stuff. Um, once they start the committee, they call roll of the committee members, um, and then they call the order of the bills. So our bill will be first. The sponsors will go up and they will introduce the bill. Talk about it a little bit. They'll have prepared statements, maybe some statistics, just things that they want the committee members to know. Um, then there's a chance for some initial questions, and then they open it up to public testimony, which is all of us. Um, I think Elliot mentioned they don't typically limit public testimony until every person who is there that wants to testify has had the opportunity. So this can sometimes mean, um, it drags on until late into the night, but it's also exciting that so many people want to come and have their voice heard in politics. Um, so like I said, sometimes they request it in a panel or grouping folks together. Um, so no matter what, whether you go up on a panel or as an individual, you will have three minutes. Um, so this is about double-spaced on two pages of a paper. So when you're timing yourself, you can practice, but no matter who you are, three minutes is the limit. You'll have a microphone like this. It has a little light. It's like a stoplight, you know, green, you're good, yellow, I think thirty seconds left, and red is stop. So make sure to pay attention to that, so you can make sure you put all the main points that you want to have in there. Um, after your three minutes is over, the committee may ask you questions if they want to. Um, the chair will address you before you speak, because they broadcast it, um, via sound on the internet, so they, folks want to know who's speaking. So say, you know, Representative blah blah had a question for you. They would ask you the question before you respond. The chair will address you and say, um, Emma, would you like to respond to that? And then you may respond. Um, so after all of the testimony is heard, they will do some closing statements. Again, this is the sponsors adding any facts that weren't heard or pointing out key pieces that may have been missed in the, in the testimony phase, and then they will call the vote. So, pretty basic. That is how a committee goes. Um, but what I want to dive more into is how to give effective testimony, because when there are so many people testifying, we really want to hone in on what makes our testimony special and stand out. Um, so I think of testimony as two goals. You want to persuade and educate, because sometimes you may have more knowledge on a specific subject or how it relates to you than the committee members. Um, so you start, everyone starts their testimony in the same way, like Madam Chair or Mr. Chair, thank you for allowing me to speak today. I am Emma Bleisner. I'm representing myself. You know, I might want to point out where I live if I know someone on the committee lives in my district. You don't want to single them out, but you can say, I'm a lifelong resident of Northwest Denver. Um, and I am here today supporting, and then you say your bill number. So you want to have, that's the basic intro that everyone uses, so you know who you are, who you're representing, and what position you're taking on the bill. And then you want to dive in to, like, what makes your testimony unique. So you want to use personal stories or experiences, um, you know, if you have, like, had an experience with oil and gas going upright by your house, this is where you'd want to talk about that. If you had a family member who was impacted, that might be a good opportunity. But you want to keep it focused. I think this bill is like twenty-something pages, so probably don't try to address the whole entire bill. Think about a couple of things that really matter to you all and why you're being there and why they need to listen to your specific voice on that subject. Um, so pick key points and think about how you're going to engage the committee members, educate them, persuade them, and stand out. Um, so for you all, I think you're, you know, very unique in that you have the local government aspect. You have had a very, uh, intense and unique situation with oil and gas trying to come into your town. So I think addressing that, how, you know, maybe, uh, they weren't, everything wasn't fully accurate that they were telling you, or how your community reacted to that, and how this bill would help you moving forward. Um, so I think those are some great things to point out. Um, so yeah, if, if, most likely you all will be going towards the front, but some other folks may be in the later end of the testimony. It's good not to repeat things that have already been said, so it's okay to cross out parts of your testimony or say, I want to echo what Mayor blah 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 said, or I want to echo what this organization said, and include that instead of repeating it, because we've all been in the room for a while. You want it to, to stand out, not drone on for a while. Um, you want to practice your testimony before you give it, you know, just basic public speaking rules and, um, tips. Maybe if you can, don't read it word for word. You can do bullet points, whatever works best for you, just within that, um, short timeframe. Um, at the end of your testimony, you always thank the committee members and invite, you know, thank you so much for your time. I welcome any questions that you might have. And then you wait and see if there are any questions and remember to be addressed by the chairman. Um, when answering questions, it is totally okay to say that you don't know. Um, it's better than, you know, kind of trying to come up with something on the fly or making something up. You can always follow up with them via email afterwards or send something, um, to the person who runs the committee and they can disperse it to the members. Um, it's also dif- okay to defer to someone else, um, and don't, you know, don't feel pressure if they ask you a question that you don't know. If you plan to include facts and figures in your testimony, I think that's great, especially if they're specific to your town or your situation. Um, but maybe include your citations. They might ask you for them at some point in the committee. Or you might want to have a list or a sheet to hand to people. Um, just another, like, general thing that might happen is a lot of times members are doing other things, or they have to get up and leave to present a bill in another committee. So try not to let that frazzle you or take it personally. It happens all the time, especially if we'll be there all day long. People have needs. Um, you know, I think that's basically it. I, on your sheet, you have other stuff, like you can't wear campaign propaganda shirts inside. If you do want to make a point of like, everyone from the town of Superior is going to be wearing blue, so you could stand out in a crowd that way. You could, you know, do what you want. Like Moms Demand Action, if they have a big bill, they encourage all their members to wear red. So when there's, you see a sea of red coming through the Capitol, the legislators know without, even having to speak to them, what they're supporting or opposing. Um, plan ahead. It might be a long day. Bring snacks. You're not allowed to eat in the committee room, but you can always take a break and step outside. Um, do plan to arrive early. It is going to be a crazy day. You do have to go through security to get into the Capitol. Those lines can get a little long, um, and there is limited parking availability, and that can get a little bit crazy as well. Um, but I would love to maybe hear more about what your specific testimony questions are, what you're thinking of diving into, and we can kind of talk about it in a more specific way, in a less broad manner.
Okay, thanks for the tips.
Hey, I just have two, uh, two general questions. So, um, I think it would be more persuasive and impactful, uh, so the mayor and I are planning on going tomorrow. We're going to testify. I think it's more impactful to say that, you know, we are the mayor of Superior, the mayor of the town of Superior, and we're testifying on behalf of the town of Superior, as opposed to just on behalf of ourselves. Uh, you know, I recognize that we don't have the full board here, and I don't want to, um, you know, speak out of line or anything like that, but I just think that that makes more of an impact just than, you know, I'm testifying on ba- behalf of myself. So that's really kind of a question for the board as to how, how comfortable does the board feel with, with that? I, I presume that we're all going to be united in our, uh, position on this bill. But I think that that, just as a preliminary statement, when we introduce who we are to the, uh, to the committee, that that, that's impactful. So I, I would like us to do that. Um, and then, uh, secondly, in terms of just like the logistics of, of how the committee chair actually goes and, uh, selects the people, and I know everybody signs up on the sheet. Do they just start calling the roll, um, based on, and you just have to wait and hear your name, and then you go up and testify? How, how exactly does that work?
So it, it varies bill by bill. Do you know what the plan for tomorrow is?
Yes, so typically the bill proponents, if you have a supportive committee chair, or sometimes even if you don't have a supportive committee chair, the bill proponents will actually present a list. And my understanding is you're, you're both on the list of folks who are going to be testifying in support of the bill. And so they will, there, there's going to be a design in terms of who's going when. And I think Emma mentioned there'll be some panels in this particular case, so I think there might be a, a local government panel and a kind of expert, issue area expert panel and some other panels, um, that will be prioritized. So, um, we'll have a better sense tomorrow as to exactly where you fit in and all that, but, uh, generally it won't be, it won't just be reading off the sign-in list. There'll be a little more order to that.
I, I have a little bit more information.
Okay.
What you said is exactly true. Um, just to give you a sense as to where you're going to be, um, my sense is that they're going to introduce the bill. The sponsor's going to be discussing it, um, and answering questions, but he, in this case, is going to immediately bring in, uh, Department of Natural Resources and, uh, Director of the Colorado Gas Conservation Commission, I believe, Jeff Robbins, to answer a lot of questions about what the bill would do. Um, and I'm expecting, given the, the breadth and length of this, this bill, uh, he may be up there for an hour. I, I don't know. But, um, you can expect that it, it's probably not going to be until three-thirty before, um, they bring, they start getting through some of their panels. And the panels that, that were mentioned, kind of expertise area, right, um, panels, um, local governments are likely going to be a panel, uh, in itself, and you may be, be put in with that, that panel as well. So, just, three-thirty would probably be my, my guess, but I could be off by a half an hour either way.
Do you know of other local government officials that are planning to be there?
Yes, um, I understand that, uh, there are going to be folks from, uh, City and County of Broomfield, uh, the county of Adams. Um, and that's who I know for a fact are going to be showing up. I'm, I'm assuming others as well.
Okay. In, in terms of, um, crafting effective testimony, obviously, uh, you know, we don't want to be redundant and we don't want to say the same thing. Um, and, you know, maybe this is something that we talk about, uh, you know, offline, uh, and just kind of move on with what we need to talk about tonight. Um, but it seems to me that a, a natural, you know, obviously the, the focus of the bill on public health, prioritizing public health in consideration of oil and gas development in general, needs to be central to, to the testimony. And talking about the experience that the town has had with the Highlands application and location of it under Rocky Flats and just the unique threat that that posed to the town, I think is something that, you know, we have an opportunity to, to, to speak about, and, um, I think it'll be impactful. One, you know, natural, uh, kind of division in terms of the way the bill is crafted, where I think we could kind of split our emphasis is on just... I think we could kind of split our emphasis is on just land use in general and, you know, siting of well sites and then regulation of the operations. You know, both of these are things that there, you know, the powers of the, of the local governments under, under the rules, under the, under the proposed act and may, you know, give us a, a unique perspective on it. But, you know, I'm, I'm just throwing something out there right now. I haven't really thought long and hard about it, but I mean, I think we definitely need to focus on rocky flats, on Highlands National Resources, on how small our town is, how it's already been planned and there's limited space to do this sort of thing and, you know, the unique threats that it poses as a result of that.
I think that's all right. I think giving specific examples to your town versus speaking broadly is helpful. I think I would emphasize also the support within the town. Matt told me that there were 300 people that showed up to a meeting to talk about this. I think that specific story is speaks volumes. So as much as you can emphasize that this really is a priority for the entire population of Superior. And also thinking through the local control piece and examples maybe of other areas where you all do have the ability to regulate as this bill is setting you up for in this particular area. So maybe just a little bit more information about how, what this bill is calling for as it relates to the local control compares to all the other things that you do already have control over would be another good place, I think, for one of you to touch on.
Because right now, if somebody came with a land use application and they wanted to locate some sort of industrial chemical facility, right? We as a, under our police powers, could determine that that is not compatible with the surrounding area and it's a threat to public health. But as the law currently stands, we could not do that. We could not make that similar determination with respect to oil and gas. So, you know, there's that carve-out right now that exists under the current law that would be changed by this and would be obviously beneficial to us.
Exactly. Great. Yeah, honing in on those specific examples, and I do think if you're able to say you're representing not only yourself as mayor and mayor pro tem, but the entire Board of Trustees and the over 300 people who, you know, showed up to stop this from happening in our town is really impactful and, and unique to what other people will be saying. Are there any other questions around testimony or just kind of the flow or anything else we can offer?
I'll just, just to get a little more granular, because we didn't really get into this, in terms of the, the committee process, right? As, as Matt mentioned, the, the bill sponsors actually come up and introduce the bill. So Senator Fenberg will, will introduce the bill and then he'll have an opportunity to field questions from the committee. And then there'll be, you know, again, a long list of testimony and then after that, and each person that testifies will potentially have some questions from the committee. And then after that, the testimony will be closed and then only then do we kind of get into talking more specifically about amendments. And that's when senators can offer amendments and that to be discussed and voted on at that time. And then finally, there'll be kind of a wrap-up with each senator, if they want to, giving some, some closing comments and then the actual vote. So just in terms of the kind of step-by-step process, that's, that's more or less what it looks like. I think in terms of tomorrow, again, there's going to be an effort in the Senate to really be as organized as possible, understanding there will be a lot of folks. So I think they're going to be setting up some overflow rooms, so not that, rooms that will broadcast the audio of the committee hearing for people who can't fit into the actual committee room. So again, depending on when you get there, you may not get a seat in the committee room, but there will be plenty of spaces throughout the Capitol where you can actually still listen to the committee testimony. And certainly I'll be there and Emma may be helping support that as well, but we can connect and, you know, Matt will be there as well, so we can make sure that you all are, are ready and comfortable in terms of the process and what needs to happen as, as things move through the process, the committee.
Okay. Very good. Anything further from the board? I'd like to offer an opportunity for public comment and discussion.
Okay. One thing marked to your question, I'm fine with you guys speaking on behalf of the rest of us. It's my position. I know the rest of you are okay. We have five quorum tonight. I think it'd be okay to make that decision. But further, I'd also like, we have some engaged members of the community here and I'm sure we have plenty watching at home. If we could talk about what members of the community could do beyond attending this testimony that could help influence this process, I think that'd be very helpful as well.
So like Elliot had mentioned, there is some specific targeting that can happen and encouraging legislators who may be on the fence to support, and members at home can do that. I don't have a specific list that I can give right now, but you can always email and call your representative and your senator. You can leave them a message. You can talk to them about why it's important to you. And folks do, from both sides. So, you know, if you think it's not important, it really is. I hear from aides and, and staff people at the Capitol all the time, how they have to go through and tally how many people are in support or opposition to a bill. So that's a really basic way to get involved. Public testimony, you know, people can always come down and testify if they're able. They can also, if they know that their representative or senator is supportive, supportive of this, let them know that they will support them, especially in these, these swing seats where supporting something like this might put them at a little bit more of a risk. They like to know that folks living within their community, "We're with you. We support you. We want you to support us on this and we'll be out with you canvassing doors when it's time for your reelection," or whatever the case may be. I don't know if you have anything to add about how folks who might be listening at home or who want to get involved other than testifying? Oh, and attending town halls. If your, you know, representatives have meetings coming up, you should go and, and thank them for what they're doing or let them know how they can serve you better. They do, you know, work for us, so.
One question I have is with respect, I mean, this is obviously a contentious bill and, you know, there's going to be people who are advocating for it and then there's going to be, you know, people who are advocating against it. What should we expect to encounter in terms of opposition from the industry, just to not be surprised and caught off guard?
Yeah, I mean, I think it will certainly be representatives of the industry, but I think, and I think as you would expect, they will be there. But I think they'll also be, I think they're going to probably work to get folks in there who are going to be directly, who they anticipate would be directly affected in terms of job loss. I think that's the picture they will try and paint is this will affect jobs in communities. So rather than certain, necessarily having the industry representatives be the face, my guess is there, there will also be a lot of folks that the industry brings in to paint that picture of job loss and kind of put more of a face, a kind of working person face on this issue would be my, would be my guess.
I've been through a few of these. So can offer a little bit of perspective and, and what you said is exactly right. The industry will give everybody the day off. And so you've got thousands potentially descending on the Capitol, you know, tomorrow. And they'll likely be wearing a, a certain color or a pin, who knows? But they, they will certainly be there in force. It is likely that job loss is going to be one of the issues that they raise. However, you know, this bill doesn't do anything about, you know, shutting down the industry as protecting public health, safety, and welfare and giving local governments, you know, some role in, in regulatory authority. So I, I think that that's kind of a weak argument. Another thing that they're going to do is frankly hide behind some of the other entities that they have. They work hand in glove with Colorado Catlemen's Association. There's going to be National Colorado Organization of Royalty Owners. There's going to be folks from the chambers of commerce, you know, business associations that, there is oil and gas industries that are sitting on those business associations and they pay a lot of money and ultimately those business associations will speak out, you know, on behalf of the industry. So we can expect that, that happens every time. I think why it's so important that we have local governments such as yourselves showing up is that, that can make the difference. You know, that, that really hasn't been this focus, an effort of, you know, bringing local governments into the mix and giving you a painful role in the regulation of this industry. This is the first.
Matt, are we expecting the other local governments that are showing up to support it as well? I mean, that may seem like a silly question, but I suppose there could be some that could be in opposition to this. Have you heard of any of that?
I haven't, although it wouldn't surprise me if there were certain counties that might be opposed. Typically municipalities recognize that they're, you know, do a lot more granular planning in, in municipalities and frankly, there's not a lot of great places for oil and gas development within a municipality. And so my expectation and hope is that the Colorado Municipal League is going to be supportive of this. You, Mark, might know because you serve on the Colorado Municipal League's Policy Committee, whether they've taken a position or, or not yet, but my understanding is that they are supportive.
They took a position today. We got an email about it.
That's just in. That's great. That's great news. And because the Colorado Municipal League does a great job and, and certainly, you know, are a force down in the legislature as well.
Yeah. The Colorado Municipal League supports SB 19-181 specifically because it includes affirmation of local control of siting and land use issues amongst other things.
That's great. So just one, one clarifying point. Tim over here just flagged for me that we're, the bill is likely going to be going first to finance, after tomorrow, finance and then appropriations. And the reason that it's going to both committees, I had, was wondering about this but hadn't heard about finance, so that's why I didn't mention it previously, but Finance Committee deals with any bill that increases revenue, whereas Appropriations deals with bills that actually where the state is spending money. And so this bill both increases revenue and expenditures. So what we're hearing is that the bill will first go to Finance in a couple of days and then Appropriations. So it may be a Thursday, Friday, or a Thursday Finance and next week Appropriations. The difference in the two is that Finance actually does provide an opportunity for greater, for, for public testimony. It's usually restricted to issues that that committee deals with. So again, looking at revenues. And so it sounds like there, there may be a call and we can circle back on this, you know, tomorrow, to have some local government participation in Finance Committee, which again would be, which would be Thursday. I don't have the exact time. I think Thursday they meet upon adjournment, which means after they get off the floor. So I think Thursday Finance meets upon adjournment, which means after they get off the floor. And again, that would be an opportunity to have some additional local government input to counter what will likely be some opposition testimony as it relates to some of the impacts that we were just talking about in terms of driving down revenues or cutting jobs. Something that will be hitting local governments negatively. So an opportunity for you all to kind of present the opposite side of that in terms of financial impacts and the cost benefit of some of the health, safety issues that we've been talking about. So we'll confirm that, but it does sound like that, that's likely to happen on Thursday upon adjournment. So kind of late, mid to late morning, early afternoon committee as opposed to the afternoon committees, which are, which is tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you. Anything further and I'll offer an opportunity for public comment? Anyone in, anyone in the public like to comment? Tim, Aaron, Dick?
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name's Tim Howard, one of the co-founders of Safe Superior. And I'm also a board member for LOGIC, the League of Oil and Gas Impacted Coloradans. We're coordinating kind of the citizen side of this. And first delighted with the diligence that the board is taking here in bringing in kind of top-notch advice and professionals to be as impactful as possible. Just a couple of comments. From what, what we're hearing just from a strategy perspective, the importance of the Thursday hearing is, is very high because that's going to be the place where industry likely attempts to push to, to have its biggest impact. So it's going to be a very long hearing tomorrow, but Thursday is going to be as or more important. So if, if your schedule permits to participate in that, please do. The one other comment I had was regarding testimony tomorrow around local control. And I, I thought the advice that was given here is fantastic. The one thing that I would, I would focus on, as opposed to looking at what this bill gives you, characterize the testimony in terms of the absence of this bill, what it presents you as a Board of Trustees with. You were basically here with a room of 300 people, all in unison, talking about how you opposed this happening and you virtually had no power to do anything about it. And so to, to me, talking about the absence and, and literally the, the stark situation as it was, because people are going to be characterizing this as taking something away from someone else. In reality, right now, we don't have anything to stop our families from facing fracking under rocky flats with a permit going in tomorrow. And it won't, the next time, it won't be a Highlands Resources who's an under-capitalized company. It'll be an extraction or a crest stone, somebody who has the wherewithal to try and drive things through. And if we don't get this bill passed, there has not been a permit that has not been approved yet. So, and, and then your hands are tied. So thank you all for your diligence, for your effort. And then just one last point. Ask what can people do who don't want to go down and testify? If you go to the, either the Safe Superior website or the LOGIC, I'm sorry, Safe Superior website or Facebook group, or you go to the LOGIC Facebook group, you will see direct links that allow you to communicate both with your state senators as well as others. There's a template that's provided, but if you can give your personal story, you can do that. Also, phone numbers are listed. You can make calls into their office, talk to their staff, as always, be respectful. And I think the, the last point that you made, which was fantastic, part of the message here is that we have their back. We know this is going to be a tough vote for a number of them, but we're going to be supportive of them and we know that what they're doing is protecting our health and safety. And so the more we can emphasize that, the better. And to try and avoid going down the rabbit hole of trying to argue specific economic points. So thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Karen Kenny, concerned town of Superior resident. So first off, thank you very much, just as was previously stated, for your time and your support of this bill, for a wonderful legal representation. I just have a couple of points I want to make. So when the attorneys were speaking regarding the, the people that work within the industry and job reduction, et cetera, then of course we have the counterpoint of if the industry is represented in our town, especially against our popular vote, how it affects our community, our property values significantly, people will move out of our town. But then what I really wanted to address was on the summary sheet from Matthew Sura, on the very first page, the middle, about the middle down, it says, "The bill directs the state to protect public health, et cetera." And then it refers to Section 3 of the bill and Page, Page 6, Line 11. So I'm quoting now. "Air Quality Control Commission is required to adopt rules to require continuous emission monitoring equipment to monitor for hazardous air pollutants, methane, and hydrocarbons." So I have the bill. I've not really read it in its entirety yet, but when I look at Section 3, yes, I see that, but then I don't really see like the details. Seems like the details are missing and that's where you protect the community in Colorado. So what I'm referring to is... So what I'm referring to is there's no explicit numeric guidelines for the safe and unsafe level of these emissions, nowhere in Section 3 do I see it. And then that absence leads me to ask, well, even if that was present, if the drilling organizations exceed those quote-unquote "safe" limits of the chemicals, then are there any fines or restrictions imposed on them to penalize them for jeopardizing the health of the community via air or water or land pollution? So I would just see that as a very beneficial amendment for the bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional public comment? Any additional comments? Okay. Maybe turn it back over to you guys if you want to address.
Well, I'll have a question for Matt with respect to that question that we just had about the lack of specificity with respect to emissions. My understanding is that what this bill does in large part, not just with the air quality controls, but also with respect to COGCC, is that in multiple parts, there's a provision that says that the various commissions shall promulgate rules with respect to air quality emissions and how the COGCC is going to function. So a lot of this is kind of contemplating a rulemaking process that's going to happen after the bill is enacted. Is that accurate?
That is accurate, although I would say that a number of folks that I'm familiar with, both in the conservation community and some local governments, are concerned about that very provision that really, if you're going to be talking about monitoring, well, what's the follow-up? Because if you do find something, you know, it is expected that there is going to be either some penalties, but more importantly, that they're going to find and fix those leaks. And I think that that was, I think that that should have been probably placed in the bill and would have made it some better language. And I know that there are folks that are trying to get an amendment similar to what you suggested in there. But for the most part, what this bill does is it can't get into the weeds on every one of these issues. It can't be prescriptive. It needs to just give broad statements, general direction to the Oil and Gas Conservation Commission in this case, giving them a mandate, a clear mandate to protect public health, safety, and welfare, and taking the handcuffs off of local governments, allowing you to do the same. And it does give, again, broad direction around some areas of rulemaking that they would like to have this newly designed commission with that new mandate take on, but can't get into that kind of granular, what needs to go into those regulations. One of the things that the industry has said is that, "We need more time, we need more time." Well, the reality is, is that, first of all, they've been discussing this issue with them for the last three months, I know for a fact. And also, there's going to be plenty of time for us to get into, you know, the rulemaking, and there's going to be a lot of stakeholder process, probably weeks to months of stakeholder process leading into the rulemaking, and then the rulemaking itself, where the Colorado oil and gas industry has shown that it doesn't hold back, and we'll have dozens of attorneys that are working on that rulemaking and representing their interests very well. So this is just the start. We get this bill through, it's the start of a process, and we all need to remain engaged in that rulemaking process too, because that is going to be as important as the legislation, frankly.
And in addition to the Air Quality Control Commission and the COGCC, this is also giving us as a local government the ability to implement the powers and authority granted in this section, which includes inspecting all facilities and then imposing fines for leak, spills, and emissions. So, I mean, obviously, the devil's in the details with respect to the rulemaking committees that are going to talk about air quality control and COGCC, but at least this is another power that is granted to us, which is great. I mean, we want to have as much power as possible.
Right, and, you know, I know that Town of Superior, like many other municipalities and local governments, are going to be looking at, you know, the possibility of doing some code amendments in the event that this passes, because their code, you know, doesn't contemplate them having the authority that this grants them.
Okay. Is there anything further from the board?
So just to sum up for everyone who's also watching at home, because I'm sure we have lots of people here watching us in their living rooms tonight. So what we've heard tonight is there's a vitally important piece of legislation out in front of the Assembly, and it's not just important for our town, but for every municipality in the state. We felt this when Highlands came, and we as a town were left with inadequate tools to be able to actually address the best interests and safety of Superior residents. I think that as we move forward in supporting this legislation, this will not only untie our hands, but it gives local governments the power to actually protect their residents, their environment, their health, their welfare, the environment. I hope that everyone who's watching, everyone who's here tonight, actually takes the steps that we heard and discussed to move forward and contact your state officials and anybody else to try to help propel this bill forward so it can pass the legislature and sign by our governor.
Thanks, Ken. Others?
I just want to echo Trustee Lish's comments. You have my full support to go down and speak before the Senate Committee. I know you both have some experience speaking on behalf of our town and have always represented us very well. I absolutely believe that it is the obligation of us as trustees to protect the health, safety, and welfare of our citizens. What happens all over the rest of the state is not my problem, but right now, I cannot protect our citizens. And when this issue came before us, I have never felt so disenfranchised and disempowered as an elected official to be able to look out on the audience and see our residents, some of whom I know had never been engaged on an issue in this community, and I've known them for 20 years, but this was an important issue, and to not be able to help them. So I really hope you talk very passionately about the lack of control, the loss of control of local officials. And the only thing I would ask is, I'd love a copy of your comments before you go in. You know, if you can't do it beforehand or you have to adjust on the fly, but I'd really like to hear what you got to say, because I know you're going to do a great job for us and knock them dead.
My turn. Just to say, I don't have any concern with Mayor Folsom or Mayor Pro-Tam Laces representing us tomorrow. I'm generally in favor of the bill, given that its main intent, one of its main intents is to return local control to where it belongs. And if anyone was listening to last week's meeting and my rants about the town's wireless ordinance or the Verizon MLA, you know that I care deeply about local control. This bill actually lets the residents of the town have a real say about how they feel about oil and gas development. You know, obviously, right now, we have, we feel one way, that may change 20 years from now. I don't know, but at least the town can decide. I'm generally in support of this bill, as I said, but I don't have any illusions about how it may change during the process, and, you know, we'll have to stay on top of it. And the collaboration that we're having right now allows us to do that, and I think this is fantastic. I'm really kind of looking forward to the process. I'm going to do everything in my schedule to try to attend on Thursday, and I'll just have to let you know, because I think, as you guys have all said, the more engagement here is just incredibly important. Thanks.
Thank you, everybody, for coming out tonight, speaking public comment. Thank you to Matt and Elliot, and just for being our advocates and a invaluable resource for the town on this issue. You know, we've had to take an oil and gas boot camp in terms of, you know, getting up to speed. You know, we've been very fortunate in that we haven't had to deal with this in the past. And so when it came before us in the fall, it was a wake-up call, right? And as a result, we had to get up to speed. And now, you know, we've had an election, and elections have consequences, and there is a unique opportunity for some comprehensive and really momentous legislation to get passed here. And, you know, at some point, the House and the Senate won't be controlled by the Democrats, and we won't have the governor's mansion as well. So, you know, if there's an opportunity to pass something that's actually going to have dramatic effect on the Town of Superior, you know, enabling us with the tools to actually protect the public health, safety, and welfare of our citizens, really, the time is now. So I don't want to be, you know, an idealist and assume that we're going to get everything that we want, you know, hopefully we do, but let's get what we can get. And so I'm going to be honored to go down to the Capitol tomorrow. This will be my first time testifying at the Capitol, but I'm honored to go down and speak on behalf of the town. I appreciate the confidence that the board has in trusting me. I will gladly share my thoughts as soon as I put them down after the board meeting tonight. I'll be working on it. And, you know, really, to all the people who came out and spoke at Town Hall in November, this is the sort of thing that, you know, we can't do this alone. You know, we're going to do what we can in representing the public, but it certainly helps to have, you know, folks in our community like Tim and Sandy and Jeremy and Karen and all the community members who are, you know, actually showing up at Town Hall, telling us that, you know, you expect us to protect the public health, and then similarly telling the state legislature that you expect them to give us the ability to protect the public health, because that's really impactful. We need to have a unified voice, we need to have a loud voice, and, you know, we need to just demand the ability to adequately protect the environment, protect the public health. So, you know, I look forward to tomorrow, I look forward to this process. We're going to continue to stay engaged. I'm going to be in court on Thursday, so I will not be able to go down to the Finance Committee hearing. So if there's somebody else who's available, I'd really appreciate if somebody else is covering that. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Mark. Thanks Elliot, Matt, and Emma for being here to represent us and provide us with the guidance that we need through this. This has been, as my colleagues have said, we've learned a lot since November, and I, for years, would sit in meetings with my colleagues from Lafayette and Erie, and they'd be talking about all the oil and gas things, and I'd just be sitting there thinking, "Well, glad we don't have to deal with that." And much to my surprise, we did, and never thought that that would be the case, but, you know, I think we've responded well to it, and I thank all of those residents who came out and really gave us the very clear message that we needed to get after this and respond appropriately. And that's my message, part of my thoughts on messaging for tomorrow, is that, you know, no other issue in my four years have I seen such a profound response from residents that were legitimately scared about their health and their property values and their children and what was going to happen to their community if 30 wells were drilled in their backyard, basically, in our four-square-mile town. So that's, those are going to be my messages. And Matt, I think you said, you know, you used the term "we were handcuffed." I mean, that really resonated with me. Sandy, you said that too, and I felt that way. You know, we were here presenting what we knew, but we were sitting here behind the dais thinking, or feeling like, we were handcuffed, and that's not a good feeling. And so I think this bill offers an opportunity to change that dynamic, and I'm looking forward to being a part of that process. It'll be my first public testimony at the state Capitol, so looking forward to that as well, and looking forward to working with Mark to really work on some good comments in conjunction with each other and hope that we can be effective on, you know, whatever forum they give us to present tomorrow. I'll look at my schedule and see what I can do on Thursday as well. If I can be there, I'll be there, because I think that's absolutely important for us to have a role in this. Thank you all for coming out tonight. Thank you all for watching us remotely, and appreciate everyone's involvement. And if there's nothing else, we will adjourn the work session. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.